We'll announce our 10-second warning so our team members can get ready.
We'll announce our 10-second warning so our team members can get ready. Welcome to our February 7, 2013 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I'm Mayor John Lewis and tonight we also have a very special part. The first part of our council meeting, the State of the Town. We'll talk more about that in a couple of minutes. But we're pleased to have our Boy Scouts here. We'll begin, as we call the meeting to order, with our invocation, which will be offered by Pastor Tom Carlini of the Life Church East Valley. I was trying to put a link there. So, Life Church East Valley. After the invocation, Vice Mayor Cooper will introduce the Boy Scouts and the scout that will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Tom, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Shout out to Class 21, class of the century. If we could all stand, let's pray, bow our heads. Father, we love you this evening, Lord, and it's a privilege to be a part of serving a youngish town. God, we come to you today to ask for your guidance. God, we need your wisdom and we need your support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage, Father, in meaningful discussion and allow us to grow closer together as a group of community-minded individuals. Fill us, God, with your grace as decisions are made today that may affect the town of Gilbert and continue to remind us, God, that all that we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of your name being glorified and for the service of your people. God, I ask for every person in this room to be blessed as they leave this place and that you would be with them individually. We love you, Lord, and we ask this in your son's name. Amen. May be seated.
Mayor Lewis, William Batts will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great mayor. We have with us the Titan Patrol from Troop 280 and we'll have them introduce themselves. And I have some constitutions here that will... copies of the constitution that we'll give them and helping them fulfill their merit badge. So, go ahead and introduce yourself and pass the microphone down.
William, Troop 280.
Brad, Troop 280.
Jacob, First Class.
Kate, Troop 280.
Andrew, Troop 280.
Matt, Second Class.
Jonah, Troop 280, First Class.
Thank you, boys. You look great and thank you for representing our community so well. Mayor Lewis?
Thank you. May be seated. I had the privilege to meet with Troop 280, the patrol, before our meeting tonight and they are impressive. And we thank them for coming. They asked some really tough questions and hopefully they got the right answers. Tonight, our first item, now that we've had our invocation and the pledge, is our State of the Town. Earlier today, as almost what you would call a warm-up, we had a special event with the chamber where we had what we called the State of Business. And in that discussion, we talked about some things happening from a business standpoint. It included a very aggressive five-year goal that Gilbert has to have 10,000 new jobs in Gilbert. And that means that new businesses will come in and it means that we'll have the type of open-to-business, business-friendly environment where existing businesses who are here will be able to expand and grow. That's a very aggressive goal and yet, we can do it. And we can do it because this is a time in the history of Gilbert where businesses will come, the economy has shown the improvement. This is the type of place they'll want to be. And so, we also talked in this meeting about building a business community. And we said, building a business community is a team sport. And we referenced many of our partners at the state level, our regional partners, our local partners that are making that happen. We referenced our Arizona Commerce Authority and our leader Sandra Watson, who's a Gilbert resident and leading that organization. Our regional partners at the Greater Phoenix Economic Council of the AmeriCopa Association of Government of our East Valley Partnership. Locally, we talked about our education leaders, of our business leaders, our community leaders, our faith group leaders, and we thank them. For many in the room, from a business standpoint, I also thank you because we talked about some services that the town has added to, I'll call our business toolkit, in the last year and some that will be coming out with a March 1 deadline. In that setting, I said, "Thank you" because those services have come to our toolkit because of you. Because as business leaders, you've identified ways that we can do things to help you have a better business and a better environment and also a better experience when you come to do business with the town of Gilbert. Please keep that feedback coming. We also talked about, and tonight I reference many of you who are here as members of our volunteers, our boards and commissions. And I thank you for that and the services you provide and the citizens at large where you are engaged. And you have a card that you've been given here tonight that is our High-Performing Government Plan and that's part of things that you've given us feedback on what we need to be doing. We also recognize that as a government entity, that we do things together with our neighboring cities at the state level, at the federal level. I would like to invite, as part of our building community process, an elected official who might be here. And Gilbert Town Council members, stay put for a minute, but all the others, if you could please come forward. And Chuck, that includes you. I'm going to have you stand to my right. Come on, as they would say on a game show, "Come on down." Chuck, I'm going to have you go on the far right and you'll know why in just a minute. This is a group of six of the finest leaders in our state, in our East Valley, in our neighboring communities. I'm going to pass the microphone just down the row and ask them to introduce themselves. Chuck, when we get to you, there's also representing our congressman for this district, something very special that will be happening Saturday and that's your cue to make sure that our Gilbert citizens and those watching know about it. So, Mayor Barney, please.
I'm Gail Barney, Mayor of Queen Creek.
I'm Mayor Jay Tipshering from Chandler. I had gotten my train hat out, but then you told me your wife said you're going to make this a little shorter. So, anyway, it's great to be here. I appreciate working with Mayor Lewis and the City Council of Gilbert on things of mutual interest to both of our communities. It's been really good. The city manager, Patrick Banjer, I've had a chance to interact with him. So, we wish Gilbert the best and look forward to our partnerships continuing.
Thank you for inviting us. I'm Jack Sellers, the Vice Mayor of the City of Chandler.
Good evening. I'm Trinity Donovan, a council member for the City of Chandler.
Good evening. I'm Warren Peterson, State Representative for District 12. Honored to be here tonight. Thank you for the invitation and thrilled to be a citizen of Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Chuck Gray. I'm representing Matt Salmon. He's the congressman for this district and I am his district director. And so, this Saturday at 207 North Gilbert Road, which is in the Heritage Court District, we are having a grand opening for your fifth congressional district offices. We're opening those offices and the mayor himself of Gilbert here, Mayor Lewis, will be the emcee and he'll be emceeing that fine opportunity. So, at 9:30 a.m. on Saturday till 11:30, we're going to start the program right at 9:45 and then the congressman will also speak. We'll have a little ceremony and then we'll cut the ribbon and let you see the new offices. So, we'd like to invite all of you out to see your District 5 congressional offices.
Thank you, Chuck. Please join me in giving these six leaders a nice round of applause. Thank you. Oh, guess what? I forgot something. We're taking a picture. Hold that. We have one other person. Steve, come on down. And did we miss anyone else? Steve, please, Steve. Chuck, do you still have that microphone? If you can hand that to our county supervisor and please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry, there is a reason why I got detention in high school. It's because I was always late. So, my apologies and I'm very honored to be representing at least half of Gilbert and Danny Barney does a very good job representing the second half. So, thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you here. Now, you have a family member that... Do we need to introduce this wonderful son that is joining you tonight?
My son Grant Chukri.
We've gotten that signal, okay, but he's here with you. We now shift to something historic. You're about to see the first-ever digital State of the Town. I need to give a little background. Our town manager, Patrick Banjer... Patrick, could you please stand and be recognized? Last year, as he was looking at Gilbert and how to prepare us for the future, he had learned and heard about something that New York City had done. They had created a digital communication office and that had helped them in their communication to citizens and then they also discovered it had helped them in many other ways with economic development, with helping with public safety and public works and other aspects of New York City. And so, Patrick was very interested in this digital communication office to the point where he came to the council and said, "I think we need to create one." And so, we did. And with that office, we have some very talented individuals and we thought, because we also have a strategic initiative to be a technology leader, that it would be most appropriate to be the very first municipality to do what's called a digital State of the Town. Now, one reason why I like it, and you may have a question, "Well, what is it?" You'll see in just a minute. But one reason why I like it, it gives us a chance to involve others. So, it's not just the mayor speaking and that fits my personality very well. It also does something that our digital team, which we have named Gilbert Digital. And by the way, if you did not get a card, we've got cards to give you because right here you're also able to see how to get access to Gilbert Digital and even tonight's presentation, which has been broadcast on Channel 11 and streaming live on the internet. This is how you can find out that information. This team also realizes that an advantage they have and for the community is that they can edit, which means if the mayor gets long-winded, they have the ability to work the magic and to condense down verbiage into a shorter time period, which is why at this point, I am pleased to stop talking and to simply say, "On this historic night in Gilbert, please join me in welcoming a first-ever, the historic, digital State of the Town."
Hi, I'm Gilbert Mayor John Lewis and I'm here to introduce our 2013 State of the Town. This year, we're doing things a little differently. This is a digital State of the Town. So, exactly what does that mean? In our efforts to become leaders in digital government, we're not just telling you all about the progress our town has achieved and the changes you can look forward to. We're showing you. 2012 was an eventful year for Arizona and for Gilbert. It was also a centennial year and Gilbert joined the celebration. Looking back at the last 100 years, in 1912, less than 1,000 residents lived and farmed in Gilbert. Our town was known as the Hay Capital of the world, but that's no longer the case. In the last 30 years, we've experienced unparalleled growth and expansion and with it, recognition. In 2012, Gilbert was named the 33rd best place to live in the country. We've also been named one of the safest cities and we hold the title of Most Playful City USA. These are just some of the many reasons more people are making Gilbert their home. Our housing permits jumped from 1,000 in 2008 to 2,400 in 2012. And we're not just expanding our population. Our 1,200 town employees are expanding and enhancing services. Our police and fire departments are working around the clock every day to keep our citizens safe and town leaders like manager Patrick Banjer play a vital role in our high-performing government.
High-performing government would be no different than a high-performing organization. As Gilbert continues to grow, we get larger and we get more complex and our operations get more complicated. And so, our job as an organization is to maintain a high level of customer service and excellence while minimizing the amount of internal bureaucracy, costs associated with delivering those services and the effectiveness of our personnel is maximized to the fullest extent possible. One of the first things we undertook was redefining and reviewing our current mission, vision and values. It is one of the most fundamental things for any organization in identifying our culture, identifying what we stand for. Our mission is Gilbert is a service organization committed to enhancing the quality of life and serving with integrity, trust and respect. Our vision statement is that Gilbert will become best-of-class in all lines of service. The six values that we identified are integrity, respect, accountability, innovation, learning and communication. It now creates the foundation of our organization for our workforce so that every day when we come into work, everyone knows what's expected out of them, the commitment that we're going to make to our citizens and our businesses so that they in turn know what they can expect. One of the significant changes we made as part of this process was the rebranding of our communications department into the Gilbert Digital Initiative. That goes far beyond just utilizing the new tools for marketing and communications and social media with Facebook, with Twitter. That's going to help our residents understand what the government's doing, how they communicate with it and hopefully get increased value from our services. The last major organizational initiative that we implemented this year is our wildly important goals or WIGs, as we call them. And what this program allows us to do is execute on new projects and new cultural initiatives while also balancing and still delivering on the daily services that we do for our residents and businesses. A high-performing government. This is Gilbert.
Our council members also have wildly important goals to make Gilbert the best it can be for its residents, improving services, opportunities, jobs, even transportation.
We have both things to be proud of and things to look forward to when it comes to 2012, 2013 transportation improvements. There've been great transportation improvements to our road system over the last year. Chandler Heights, Riggs Road, in conjunction with that, the Power Road Corridor. We've also started construction on both Higley and Linesfield, Higley and Baseline and all of these are opportunities for us to continue to see ease of travel, ease of use of our road system in the town. One of the neat things that's been occurring is a joint project to understand the best commuter rail route between Phoenix and Tucson and Gilbert is a top contender for that. You can imagine what it might look like to have a commuter rail station where our old rail siding once was, right in the heart of Gilbert. Connecting the community. This is Gilbert.
As we build new roads here in Gilbert, we're also paving the way for new businesses. Vice Mayor Van Cooper is helping plan Gilbert's largest multi-use development.
Rivian will be a great neighbor to residents here in Gilbert because not only will it bring employers and the high-quality jobs that come with them, but there will be retail, restaurants, exercise facilities, entertainment uses. And that helps Gilbert in many ways. It diversifies our economy, it broadens our tax base and it helps people spend more quality time with their families. Gilbert's best days are ahead of us as far as economic development is concerned. We have reached a point in our history where it is the time for jobs and Gilbert is well-poised for that. Economic development. This is Gilbert.
Businesses in Gilbert are also operating more smoothly thanks to independent regulatory advocates. Councilmember Victor Peterson has been working with our local business leaders to reduce unnecessary regulations.
This is a pilot program we've recently begun and so far, it's been a huge success. We have organizations like the Small Business Alliance who are trained to sit down with our businesses and explain our regulatory structure. Now, we're able to send people who don't have all the street smarts to the people who know. This will save our staff time plus it will provide some very valuable educated feedback because again, these are the groups who know how our regulations work. They'll know which regulations are necessary and they'll also know which regulations we need to take a look at. Gilbert Chamber of Commerce is also an advocate in the program. So, the strength here is that we don't have additional bureaucracy created because we're utilizing existing advocacy groups and we don't handpick who to send them to. We allow any group who wants to be certified as an independent regulatory advocate to go through our simple training program and then we provide a list of all the certified advocates to every person who's trying to navigate our regulatory structure. Fiscal responsibility. This is Gilbert.
The heart of our business community is our small businesses. Our open-to-business culture will also be a priority for newly-elected council member Jared Taylor.
2013 is going to be great. I'm looking forward to working with so many of the wonderful people in the town council and listening to citizens, learning more about the town. I'm here to champion our families, make sure we have a great, safe community for them to grow and raise their children and also to champion our small business group, providing jobs, strengthening our economy and all the great things that a strong, vibrant business community has.
Gilbert strives to provide efficient, best-in-class services. Another change that benefits business and residential growth happened this past year through the efforts of many, including the leadership of former Vice Mayor John Sins, thanks to some unexpected inspiration.
When we did a remodel a couple of years ago of our home and my wife asked the architect, "Hey, I want to see the plans. Can you send them to me?" And he emailed them to her in a PDF. And I said, "Wait a minute, why can't we do that with all our plans?" So, I've just taken it upon myself to really push and try to get development services to be really lean and more efficient and do things faster. In 2012, we really get going with our electronic plans, middle and review. We don't have to hand-shubbed paper and we can comment electronically back to our customers. Electronic plans, middle and review will eliminate all this paper, which is saving our customers a lot of money and it's also saving the town money. To me, that's one of the major highlights for development services this year. My vision is when somebody brings a project to the town, they can do it all from a distance. They don't have to come down here. They do it all electronically. The faster that we can get our applications approved, get permits issued, the better it is for the town from an economic standpoint. Efficient development services. This is Gilbert.
Being a lean and efficient organization is important to us. One of the ways Gilbert leaders ensured efficiency this year was with a zero-based budget process. In simple terms, you would say that we built our budget from scratch. Councilmember Eddie Cook was heavily involved in the process.
This last fiscal year, with a fairly new town council and a new town manager, one of the most important pieces of information that we felt was truly understanding what does it cost to really maintain the level of services that we expect. With that, we came up with basically three points. Zero-based budgeting, program-based methodology, as well as priority-based methodology, having every department really share with senior management, what are those costs? And then, once we know that and understand really how revenues are, then we'll be able to allocate those funds. And that's really our focus. Building the best-in-class budgeting. This is Gilbert.
As we make the most of our budget, Gilbert is able to provide best-in-class facilities and recreational areas for its citizens. Councilmember Jordan Ray has taken the council lead on a master plan to make Gilbert a great place to play.
The goal is looking five, 10, 20, 30, 50 years down the road, making sure that we have good parks in the town of Gilbert because many of us chose to come to Gilbert because of the parks, the open space, the ability to have our kids come out and play and enjoy the outside, enjoy playing sports, enjoy being here at the dog park. So, we want to make sure that we have the appropriate types of park, the appropriate quality of parks, all of which to continue to make this a clean, safe and mindful community. This is Gilbert.
Our parks, trails and open spaces add to our quality of life and community livability. They're just some of the reasons residents are happy to call Gilbert their home.
It's safe, it's clean. Characteristics of a charming little town.
I like the kind of family atmosphere.
Joe's Barbecue.
You have that sense of community.
And the people are really friendly.
Just kind of feel like we all belong to something special.
This is Gilbert, a great place to live and work, a business-friendly community with thriving small, medium and large businesses providing jobs, goods and services for our community. Many of them are expanding right here in Gilbert. Here are a few examples.
We're working on developing and commercializing all of the different products that can be produced from algae. 2012 was a year of growth for us. We started out the year with about 35 employees and we ended the year with almost 80 employees. We're going to be building our commercial plant right here next to our facility. We'll probably, as a result of that, be hiring an additional 20 to 25 people. It was a great location environmentally for us and the town of Gilbert has been great to work with. Commercial algae production. This is Gilbert.
This facility is part of HepsiStar Corporation, which is a leading global provider of satellite operations and video distribution. operations and video distribution services. EchoStar manages the fourth-largest commercial satellite fleet in the world. The predominance of mild weather, clear skies give our customers a peace of mind that signal disruption is highly unlikely. Another reason that we located in Gilbert has to do with workforce. This community is close to Phoenix, and the metro area is home to many colleges and universities, and so we have a ready workforce of potential employees that have the engineering skills that we need. This facility has 180 local employees, including 52 residents from the town of Gilbert, and they directly benefit from the high-tech jobs that we provide. We here at EchoStar look forward to being a strong player in the video delivery and in the digital business marketplace here in Gilbert for many years to come.
Gateway Airport had an epic year in 2012, and passenger service grew. We've expanded the passenger terminal from six gates to eight, and we have plans in 2013 to go from eight gates to 10. In 2011, we had just under a million passengers come through Phoenix, basically Gateway Airport, and in 2012, that went up to just under 1.4 million. Long-term, we're looking out five, 10, 15 years. The plan is to build a tunnel building on the east side of the airport. Gateway Airport is a fast-booming airport, and it has a major economic impact that benefits Gilbert residents. Providing passengers a choice. This is Gilbert.
Here at Ormond with Gilbert, we specifically have built the Landsat Data Continuity Mission Satellite that was just shipped to the launch site at Vandenberg Air Force Base. It'll be launching February 11th, and we're looking forward to that being very successful.
Hey, go through the door.
Later this year, we're gonna be putting together 81 satellites here for a program called the Orminium Next Program. Well, right now, we have approximately 300 employees that are at this site. We're hoping to be able to have that grow over the near term as we bring in more satellites to design, to build, and to test here. Science and Technology. This is Gilbert.
Construction, like this new Banner Medical Clinic and the new Veterans Administration outpatient clinic announced for Gilbert, are examples of continued healthcare expansion. It's hard to believe that just over seven years ago, Gilbert did not even have a hospital in our community. Now, our life science, biomed, and healthcare organizations have some of the most advanced facilities in the country, right here in Gilbert. Two organizations provide the following update.
We were really happy that Thomson Reuters recognized Banner Health as one of the top five large health systems in the country. Getting a little closer to home, we were very pleased to get a $5 million grant from James M. Cox Family Foundation for the ability to create Cox Center for Integrative Oncology and Cancer Prevention. We continue to have a lot of clinical trials that we have open for individuals. One of them has to do with pancreatic cancer. Breast cancer trials as well are open. Leukemia, and we are just beginning to create our stem cell transplant and cellular therapy program, and many more are on the near-term horizon for us.
We've got intangible tanks, and that's what he's in for.
It means that people will have the opportunity to stay close to home and get highly-integrated oncology care.
Here at Mercy-Gilbert Medical Center, 2012 has been an exciting year. We continue to grow and expand our services with the community of Gilbert and surrounding areas. We now participate in over 20 clinical trials that are national and international in nature around the application of human stem cells in the treatment of cardiovascular disease. We've seen significant growth in orthopedic surgery at the hospital. We are also in the preparation stages for becoming a Level 3 Trauma Center, and we are also on the front end of a planning process to expand our nursery. In Gilbert, you will have the ability to seek the best care close to home, to see the best doctors, and be treated by the best nurses, and have truly a world-class hospital really right in your neighborhood and your backyard.
Last year, the president of MD Anderson, Dr. Ronald Opino, made a visit to Gilbert and gave an inspiring message for our future. He said, "The world is counting on us." He was referring both to finding solutions to cancer and other innovations that might originate right here in Gilbert. The days of the hate capital of the world are long gone. As Gilbert grows and evolves, we hope someday soon, we can say...
We are the algae production capital of the world.
We are the healing capital of the world.
And we are the cancer research capital of the world.
We are the satellite capital of the world.
We are sure to become the satellite, healing, cancer research, algae capital of the world. It's a future our children can count on, and with our local schools focusing on science, technology, engineering, and math, we will. Arizona State's University President, Dr. Michael Crowe, recently shared a similar message as he spoke to community leaders about the future of education in Gilbert.
The thing that we have to do in terms of getting Gilbert College and career-ready is to focus obsessively on innovation. The world that was the past is no more. It's really hard for people to understand this. It is no more. If we're really serious about this, we've gotta get 100% of our children educated to what we think of as the 2013, 2015, 2020 level of what an American high school graduate needs to know. The central force in education must now be innovation.
It is current, it is up to date. We want to make sure that that curriculum is at state-of-the-art level. In other words, we bring in and partner with businesses, universities, to make sure that the curriculum is aligned and is cutting-edge so that they're not behind. It's not an old curriculum, so that they are college and career-prepared for jobs right here in Gilbert.
I see great things happening in education, especially for Gilbert Public Schools and other school districts in this area, starting at the Common Core Standards, which is an initiative we're going to join with 45 other states, and those standards will raise the rigor so they can compete and be world-class.
We have students that are very successful in learning, and they are prepared to move on and advance not only through junior high, but then into high school, and then into the workforce ultimately, because we give them a solid foundational education here.
We will continue to make tremendous gains in student achievement and continue to be what I refer to as an economic engine, because I think quality schools bring businesses, attract people to live in our community, and I think we're the foundation that many communities rely on.
It takes lots of practice to swallow a cactus.
I think the future of education for Gilbert is just bright and exciting, and just for the additional pieces that we've got of choice. Not only do we have incredible district schools, our public school offerings, we've got a phenomenal group of private schools, and of course charter schools, and whenever you look at additional pieces, charter schools seem to be looking at Gilbert every year to expand to. When we started here in Gilbert, we started with just 45 kiddos. This year, as a matter of fact, we're educating over 600. We'll be at full build-out for us next year at 700. So to be able to see that growth and provide those opportunities for our parents and for the town of Gilbert has been fantastic.
Developing lifelong learners.
Educational leaders.
World-class education.
This is Gilbert.
This is Gilbert.
This is Gilbert!
I could not have said it any better: career education, booming business possibilities, healthcare innovation, science, technology, advanced services. This is your home. This is my home. This is Gilbert. Digital State of the Town. This is Gilbert. Thank you for coming. We have maybe one more item, and then we'll have a short recess with some refreshments and times to just socialize. Town council members, if you could come forward and stand right behind me. Vice Mayor Cooper, if you could be right here. We received word, and by the way, we have many of the actors and actresses from our digital State of the Town right here, and we thank you for your participation. Let's give them a nice big round of applause. So we received word from the Academy Award production team, and they said they couldn't wait for the next Academy Awards, that they wanted this presented tonight at this event. Vice Mayor Cooper, the envelope says, "Best Digital State of the Town." And we know the nominees. Can you announce the winner, please?
Be happy to. Let's, let's see here. Gilbert Digital!
Gilbert Digital! Would our five team members of Gilbert Digital please come on down and stand right here? I'm going to have... Steve, how are you taking a picture? Would you just delegate to our county supervisor? Dana, if you can come right here. This is Dana Birchman, our chief digital officer, and can you introduce the team members or we can pass the mic, and then we'll have a picture taken, please?
Sure, sure, sure. This is Jessica Bautista in Gardenia La Madrid, our two digital journalists who worked tirelessly to put together that production. Jennifer Alvarez is our media and community relations administrator, and Zara Gort handles all of our web and design and the beautiful programs that you saw on your seat. So, thank you.
And in place, and Vice Mayor Cooper, I can use my belt, and in place of an Academy Award, of course, on behalf of the town of Gilbert, this is something sweet for the five of you, and we'll just pass those out. And then, our county supervisor, Steve, you're doing a great job. We'll just, I'll get in here for one more picture. All right, to the team, forward to the camera. A nice round of applause too for our county supervisor, Steve. With, with great appreciation to our Gilbert citizens, thank you. We will do our best to thank you during the next 15 minutes. We'll have a recess, and we will begin the formal part of the town council meeting in 15 minutes. Ready break. Ready, break.[139.28]
Thank you again for being here and we will announce our 20-second warning and then we will continue with the meeting. Our town clerk, Kathy Templeton, will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
He will be right back.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
For Miss President.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels, Agenda Item Number Two, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Character Counts pillar of the month for February. This month's highlighted pillar is respect. As council members and town staff, we agree to listen and communicate openly with the goal of building mutual respect. We pledge to treat everyone with courtesy, politeness, and dignity. We value individual and cultural differences and follow the golden rule.
Thank you. And I insert one current event on that subject of our Character Counts. Those of you who are here in council chambers, you'll notice on the wall that I'm pointing to has the six pillars of Character Counts, which is a key part of our Gilbert community. And we read one of the pillars once a month. And there's also, once a year, a Character Counts breakfast that we bring our youth together and recognize them for their efforts. In order to provide funding for that breakfast, there will be a special Mayor's Character Race and Relay on Saturday, March 23rd. There will be more details coming in the paper, on our website, and please pay attention to that and be ready to participate in that special event. Thank you. Before I go to Agenda Item Number Three, one more current event. I think Councilmember Ray, while we've got a larger mass here, a championship team. Tell us more.
So we had, over the last couple of months, we've had a couple of youth football programs who've come in and been recognized by the town for their success. Two of them went to New Orleans two weeks ago as part of the Super Bowl activities to play in the national tournament for youth football. Both teams are coached by Coach Esposito. He's head coach on one of the teams and assistant on the other team. But we just heard back that the 14-and-unders won the national championship and the 11-and-unders got third place. And so hopefully we'll have them back again, Mayor, and recognize them as national champions. But an exciting thing, Little Gilbert, Arizona, now national champions of football.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Three, this is our Career and Technical Education Month, and there's a proclamation and a group of individuals here that -- Councilmember Taylor, please.
I'd like to invite students and faculty from Campbell Verde High School that may be with us to just come right up front here. Campbell Verde High School is one of the great high schools in Gilbert that leads in this particular area. And so pleased to read a few selections of this proclamation. Actually, before I do this, let me hand the microphone here and have you introduce yourself.
I'm Amber Rangston.
And I'm Jasmine Cole.
Thank you. So the couple proclamation paragraphs here, "Whereas February 1st through the 18th, 2013, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, and whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our education system. And whereas career and technical education offers individual lifelong opportunities to learn new skills which provide them with career choices and potential satisfaction." So we're pleased to present this proclamation to these students.
Any of the other high school team members that are here as part of our Career and Technical Education, please come forward and be recognized. We'll do the best to fit this in, and you can let us know on taking the picture for you. Of course, we need to get a little bit closer. Do we need to do a row one on the knee? All right. If any of you are comfortable, and it might be our male team members to be able to go like this. Come on down. The rest of us keep scooting in. Now, before we have you leave, I understand, so we have Campbell Verde, Mesquite High School. Any other high schools represented? Oh, but, come on. Tell us a little more, please.
Okay, we have, well, we have representatives from all five high schools. We have Campbell Verde, we have Desert Ridge, Gilbert High School, Highland High School, and Mesquite.
Now, is it correct that there's a presentation that a couple of you are going to be making? Please come forward. And this is wonderful. For those who are not able to see, can you tell us what these two present, what these items are?
This is a then-and-now of Liberty Market from 1916 and 2005. These are the four corners as from 1960 to 2004.
On behalf of the Town of Gilbert, thank you. We humbly accept, and this is beautiful art and also part of our history, so thank you for doing that. Please give these two and the whole team back here a nice big round of applause. Councilmember Cook, we'll go to your Agenda Item next.
If I could invite Mike Benskoder to the front, and Lou Anderson, and any of Mike's team members, if you're here, come on down. Well, we have a wonderful opportunity to recognize Mike for an award that he received from the Solid Waste Association of North America, and he was given an award here in Washington, DC, last August and so forth. But anyways, what I like to do is have Lou talk a little bit about this.
Yes, the SWANA organization is a national organization here, and we have a chapter in Arizona as well. Mike was the past president of the Arizona chapter. He also was very heavily involved in developing the Arizona chapter. We actually just recently renamed a award that we do each year for the state rodeo championship, the Mike Benskoder Award. So it's a great honor to have Mike as part of the team, and he's done a wonderful job for SWANA.
That sounds wonderful. And I learned a couple of things, Mike, that you also were the mastermind of what's called the Benskoder spreadsheet or something, where you've actually designed from scratch the entire distribution or a collection system throughout the entire Town of Gilbert. That's what I heard. Well, we appreciate that because obviously your team has brought huge benefit to the town as it relates to saving money, but also, you know, you returned some of that back to the citizens of Gilbert through utility reduction, I believe. So anyways, I like to read this. Congratulations. The Town of Gilbert, Arizona, hereby extends an official congratulations to Mike Benskoder, Solid Waste Specialist and Analyst for his receipt of the 2012 Solid Waste Association of North America Professional Achievement Award Public Sector. Mike was honored with this award at the conference in Washington, DC this last August. You have spent 29 years in the solid waste industry, as well as his years of membership within SWANA. Also noted was his enthusiastic volunteerism within the organization. On behalf of the Town of Gilbert, the Mayor, and the Council, we'd like to congratulate you for this achievement and thank you for all the things that you do here in the Town of Gilbert. May we have a round of applause for Mike?
Agenda Item Number Four, those involved with our Gilbert Fire Department with the presentation to Intel, if you could please come forward.
Mr. Mayor and Council, it's a great pressure, pleasure for me to be here with you this evening and to discuss an event that is going to benefit the town for many, many years and the participants that helped us get there. Let me go back just a moment in history and ask at the same time if Patrick Grog would come up. He's an engineering software from Intel that has played a key part in this process, and I'll give you some details of that as he comes up, stands next to me. Probably about two years ago, Julie Landsberg, our employee development and organizational development person for the town, and our IT person, Mark Kramer, were visiting and very coincidentally came upon a notion that they, that possibly the fire department had a need that the Arizona Quality Alliance, which we're partnered with, might be able to help. And it was kind of a three-cornered shot because Arizona Quality Alliance then aligned with Intel Corporation to assist us in the development of a mobile electronic patient care report. And you've, and we've given you reports, and some of you are new to the Council, may not be aware of it, but there are a number of items out in the marketplace that provide electronic, very mobile reporting so that we can get away as we take care of people who are sick and injured in the streets of Gilbert. We can broadcast that. It becomes data that is transportable to hospitals and it becomes data that we can carry around with us and sort the aggregate and be able to do a number of things that we've never been able to do. So it was a big step for us in that process. The marketplace shows it's, that those products are very, very expensive. And Intel, through a product, a program they call MAPS, it is mentoring and planning services where they take skilled-based individuals that match the need of the community and place them in and they volunteer time to assist the community effort, the organization, the agency, to develop their particular product or thing that they need. And sometimes it's just advice, best-in-class. We are, you might look at our idea management system, our IMS, that came as a best-in-class practice of Intel and their counsel to assist us in that process, develop that. And now we have an EPCR we've named, and we have the intellectual rights to, called Fire Docs. And Patrick Grog is the engineer that was able to help us through his involvement with our personnel. And I'm going to go ahead and go a second into the involvement that he had. Patrick has an engineering mind, and he understands round pegs and round holes very well, but he goes one step further. And in the implementation of something so esoteric, so specialized as patient care recording, he wanted to understand what we wanted out of an individual illness or injury so that we could have a very comprehensive ability to say, "We did this with that, and the outcome was this." And as he, as he went on calls with our personnel, he would ask questions afterwards of our personnel, "What is it you wanted to get out of that?" The software was designed, or the application was designed around our practice. None of the stuff off the shelf is able to do that. We have probably the best in the country from the best in the country. We thought it was appropriate tonight. We've gone through development, and you, I think we brought Patrick here one other time, or we've had an opportunity to thank him for that work, but we just went through a second phase to, for a sustainability plan. So this is a very, very complete application with a sustainable, sustainability plan that goes along with it and will carry us into the next century in that technology leader component. I think you'll be very proud to see applied in how we do business here in Gilbert. As I indicated, this is not the only application that Intel has helped us with, but it's certainly the one very closest to us here in the fire department, and we appreciate the efforts of all of those, the team from, from Intel that supported Patrick. Patrick is a Gilbert resident. He rode his bike over here to be with us as we, as we needed his time during the week, and he's been an absolute, I thought, I told him that I was going to probably be able to take him as a tax deduction because we had him enough time as a dependent in the process to be, be that. But he's a great man and a great contributor to his community, and that vested interest, I know, made that product even better than it could have been. So again, we, we thought of what we might be able to do, and Mayor, if you can help me. Absolutely. Patrick, we have some traditions, and protecting our valuable people, we wear helmets, and we thought that you were one of our valuable people, and we needed to watch out to make sure that you were protected. So here's a helmet that I think that you should wear in good health. We're anxious, anxious to see that on you at all times. Now, Mayor, if I could invite the whole Intel team that's came, that came here with us, including, including Patrick's son, who's in uniform for us tonight. We'd like to have them all come up here, because I have one last thing. And I'm going to pass the mic so you all can introduce yourselves, because I think that's important that they know who you are.
I'm Bill Hotty.
Justin Grog.
Paul Ryan.
Ah, Patrick Grog.
Evening, Rudy Hacker.
Thank you so much. These are all very important people in the team. And again, the commitment that you've made to our community that is going to carry on, and I got to say that the lives that it will affect as a result of this, of this commitment is huge. And we won't be able to measure it because we won't be able to see the people that would have otherwise passed on as a result of what you've done. But we'll be able to see what we have been able to do with that data will be more effective, will certainly be more efficient in the process, and thank you so much for your contribution. Who would I hand this to right here? Mayor? Please come forward. Thank you so much.
Gilbert Leadership Team, we understand that you are ready to present a project. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're very happy to be here tonight. My name is Gail Dish, and I'm a resident of Gilbert, and I'm also the co-team representative for the Gilbert Leadership Class 21, the Centurions, the class of the century, I might add. Also with us this evening are Alan Fitzgerald from Art Intersection and Steve Isis, who will help with this presentation. First of all, we'd like to thank the Gilbert Chamber that sponsors this program and has done such a wonderful job of leadership, the leadership board there in guiding us and working with us. The Centurions who are in the audience tonight and will stand in a moment include 27 talented and hard-working leaders who have volunteered their time and talents to create a community service project that will benefit all Gilbert citizens and also guests visiting the Heritage District. Additionally, we are raising all the funds necessary to make this project a reality. With the members of Gilbert Leadership Class 21, please stand. Now to share the project with you, we're going to start with Steve on the open space improvement and the overview of the project, and Alan on the mural.
Good evening, everybody. As, as part of our project scope, the, the main focus of our project is to have a art mural placed that's going to document Gilbert's past, present, and future. And that art mural is going to be located on the south wall of the American Legion Building, currently located on the south edge of the Heritage District over by the railroad. In addition to this art piece, we also thought it would be a nice touch to do an open space improvement to the land that's just south of the American Legion. As you may be aware, that land is currently a vacant lot that has some chicken wire wrapped around it from a dust mitigation standpoint, and we thought it would be a, we thought it would be a nice open area that could potentially become something even more in the future. We, we think of it as a starting point for the, for the land itself, and we're going to do what we can for the improvement process with the funds that we're able to generate. But we also think of it as a potential ongoing project for the Town of Gilbert, potentially from the Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts and some of the school districts around that could potentially use it for art and sculpture placement in the future. So this slide depicts the actual project location. You can see there, just south of the American Legion Building is what we're calling the Open Space Improvement piece that'll be right in front of the mural. And here is a picture depicting what the open space could potentially look like in the future. It's yet to be determined to exactly which scope we are going to take this, but we, we do feel comfortable with the funds that we are raising. We can leave it in a situation that'll mitigate the dust issues that are currently on the site, as well as also start the process and leave it in a setting that future classes of either Gilbert Leadership or, as I said before, some other Eagle Scout projects could take it and do some more art improvements and some future seeding. And we think it'll be a really nice touch to have some open space for the public to use in the future.
Good evening. We've been working on the concept for a mural. We have engaged an artist that is a member of the Gilbert Visual Art League, and she will be presenting concepts to us. So tonight I won't actually show you any representation of what we're looking for, but I will highlight a couple key features that we are looking at, a piece of art that will represent the historical attribution of Gilbert. It is our agricultural background, the train, and the veterans. As you know, we're on the American Legion. Skip Erickson, who is the commander of Post 39, has given us full permission to use the side of his building, and we will move forward on that side of the building to create what we hope will be a dramatic impact to that part of the Heritage District. As you see here, we have listed a number of themes. The top three themes are going to be very present in this mural that will be painted by each of the members of the Gilbert Leadership Class. That is one of the requirements of being in the Gilbert Leadership Class. We have looked at this from a sustainability perspective. Murals aren't always forever, so we're anticipating a five-year life. The American Legion has worked with us in our conversations about how that wall will be maintained and what we will do, and myself as well as agreement with the other members of the class to deal with issues of perhaps vandalism or some kind of damage to the mural during that five-year life. And the open space, we expect the town will be so, so happy with it and enthralled with it that they will step up and maintain it after we've put it into place. Our project day is April 6th. That means on that day, as well as some days before and some days after, but that key day, we will all be there, all 27 of us, in force painting and doing the major work to put this open space into a space that can be used and enjoyed. The Heritage District guidelines actually encourage the use of this kind of space in courtyards for the enjoyment of the pedestrians, and there's a beautiful sidewalk that runs along the south end of that that circles back up around into the Water Tower Plaza. So we will be there to create this space and create this imagery for the Town of Gilbert. We're open to any questions?
So April 6th, our town manager that has a goal to graduate with highest honors for Leadership Class 21, we need to make sure he's available. I think the Council, we support that. We'll try not to have anything else scheduled. But that, yes, I, very exciting project. And Councilmembers, any questions or comments?
So I don't, how did you qualify to become an artist, is my next question, I guess?
Maybe I could, now, look, he can do many things. He can sing, he can do artwork, he can probably even dance.
Mayor, members of the Council, I'm the one who brings water to the artists doing the actual work.
Thank you.
We will have a unveiling of the mural and the open space design and implementation on the 1st of May. That is also a date that coincides with a free lunch giveaway at one of the local restaurants, as well as the Gilbert High School Art Walk. So we should have quite a crowd downtown. The veterans will be participating in that unveiling and that final project day that we present to the Town of Gilbert, the mural and the open space.
Alan, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We move on the agenda to communication from citizens. As noted on the agenda, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The Council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Cooper, what request do we have?
Mayor, I have one here. Laura Barnes.
And Laura, as you know, you'll be given three minutes to speak. And if you could state your name and whether or not you are resident for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Cooper, council members. Nice to see you. My name is Laura Barnes, and I'm a Gilbert resident. I'm coming to speak to you tonight on two counts. First of all, as a commissioner with the brand-new Human Relations Commission. As you are aware, the Human Relations, Culture, and Arts Promotion Commission is no more. And we now have the Human Relations Commission and the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission. So with that said, I wanted to say a fond farewell to Eddie Cook, who was our wonderful council liaison for the entire year last year, who was really magnificent. And I wanted to honor you and say a fond farewell. And in the same vein, I wanted to say a hearty welcome to council member Jared Taylor, who is our new council liaison. And we are delighted and look forward to working with you in the coming year. So thank you to both Eddie and to Jared. I also wanted to bring to the town and council and community awareness that February is Black History Month. And I think this is an opportunity for us all to learn about, celebrate, and remember the lives and legacies of individuals and events that have shaped American and world history. And that leads to a fabulous segue into talking a little bit about our Martin Luther King Day celebration that occurred in January. It was on January 21st, and it was located at Redemption Church, who were very generous in giving their venue free of charge. It was a fantastic event. We had over, well, the estimate from Redemption was around 1,500 people in attendance throughout the day. We had some wonderful musical performances, some amazing inspirational speakers, some very entertaining bounce houses. But for me, the most important part of that day was the way that we were able to bring community services, exhibitors, vendors, people who could reach out to the community and bring what they had into the awareness of the residents of Gilbert, such as Drug Free Arizona, the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. We had the Anti-Defamation League, various health promotion services. It really was a fantastic opportunity to bring that to the community. So we thank you for your support in that. But we also ask for your support for next year's event. We hope that that can be something that we can build on for the future. Finally, I want to bring some comments that are more personal comments than rather than my role as a commissioner. And it's regarding the budget. I know that this is the time of the year when you're beginning to consider budget items. Can I be brief?
Please.
I wanted to bring this to your attention, that I'm aware that the town has brought into being a new mission statement, which says that we are a service organization committed to enhancing quality of life and serving with integrity, trust, and respect. And alongside that mission statement, I also wanted to use some other backup material, really. And of course, I went to the Constitution, because I thought that would speak to you, Victor. So in the preamble to the Constitution, we are told that one of the reasons the U.S. Constitution was set up was to promote, I'm quoting now, "promote the general welfare of the people." So alongside those two things, those two things I'm hearing really clearly from the Constitution about promoting the general welfare, and also from the town's mission statement about enhancing the quality of life and that the town of Gilbert is a service organization, I just wanted to just remind you and advocate for inclusivity and equality within our community. And what do I mean by that? I mean, some of the wonderful organizations that we've had here that have been supported in the past by the town and by the council. And I'm talking about things like the United Food Bank, the Salvation Army, the Gilbert Senior Center, Advocates for the Disabled, A New Leaf, Save the Family, Child Crisis Center, My Sister's Place. I could go on. One of the things that I just wanted to make absolutely clear that all of these service programs are empowerment programs. They are ways that the community helps others to help themselves. They are about earned achievement. They are about equal opportunities. They are about emergency help. They are not prolonged habitual programs that encourage dependency. These are programs and services that offer help and support to our brothers and sisters in the community who are in dire need or emergency need of help and support. I think one of the wonderful things I've heard here tonight is the way that the town has promoted and engaged and offered general welfare to businesses within the town. I've heard satellites. I've heard algae. I've heard health, some incredible programs, fantastic programs. But in the spirit of inclusivity and equality, I urge you, when you look at the budget, to consider the least among us who need our help and support, calculated compassion, if you will, to help the community.
Thank you.
And I know that there will be opportunities to talk about this further, but I just wanted that to be in your minds as you begin to consider the budget, not only fiscal responsibility, fiscal integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cooper, any others?
I don't have any other slips.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar. As noted, the items below are considered consent calendar items and may be approved by a single motion unless removed at the request of council for further discussion or action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. I see that on the dais, we have been given information that Agenda Item 18, the date is March the 2nd. And so as we consider that item, not March 3rd, but March 2nd is what we'll be voting on. And Vice Mayor Cooper, what request do we have on the consent calendar?
Mayor, we don't have any. I'd move to approve the consent calendar items 8 through 19, noting that date change that you mentioned for item 18.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, a second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. Also on the agenda, and Vice Mayor Cooper, I'll turn to you for some help, that the two public hearing items will not be heard tonight. And can you give us more details?
Item 20, I'm going to make a motion that we continue that item until the February 21st meeting. In fact, I'll make that motion right now. And the 21 will just be removed from the agenda. It's not something that we need to see.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. We move to Agenda Item 22A. Thank you. I think I will go to 22... Well, I'll go to 22A, then we'll come back to 22. On 22A, Town Manager Baner, or someone you might designate, just to give a quick overview, because this was not on the first version of the agenda. And in case any of the citizens miss this, can you tell us about 22A? And it looks like you have designated Susan as the spokesperson, so please, thank you.
I'm the designee. The town may consider the adoption of a development agreement with American Furniture Warehouse at its next meeting. Prior to doing that, the statute ARS 9500.11 requires the adoption of a notice of intention to enter into the development agreement at least 14 days prior to the action approving the development agreement. So this has been placed on the agenda for approval of the council to bring forth at the next meeting, hopefully at the next meeting, a development agreement with American Furniture Warehouse related to the development of about a 40-acre parcel. And as part of that development agreement, there's an agreement to reimburse for the cost of certain off-site improvements, which is what drove the reason for falling under this statute.
Thank you. Any council discussion? Councilmember Peterson?
Just wanted to clarify something in the packet I saw. Says that the maximum reimbursement is $2 million. Shouldn't that say, or the cost of the off-site improvements, whichever is less?
Well, that's why it says maximum. We could say that. But the development agreement that's going to come forth will have the cap as either $2 million or the obligation terminating in five years. We could clarify it more if you wanted to.
It's fine. I just want to be clear that in no case would the reimbursement exceed the cost of the off-site improvements that they invested in.
I can make that clarification in the notice of intention.
But I'm correct in that, right?
That is absolutely correct. It's only the actual cost of the offsites up to $2 million or up to five years.
Okay, my other question, and maybe this is more for whoever's, you know, kind of put together the preliminary thoughts on this deal. But why 20% for five years? Why not 50% for 20 years?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, we're still in the process of finalizing those details, and we'll bring those forward in the development agreement.
All right. I just asked because it's in our packet tonight, so... Well, I don't know if anyone else has any comments on this, but if not, I just want to share a few thoughts before we vote.
Please. Well, let me... Did anyone else have comments?
No, but I would like to make sure that we're talking about the notice of intent rather than the actual deal details in your comments, only because while there may be some outline in there, we're not voting on the deal tonight. We're voting on the notice of intent. So I just want to make sure that those comments are pertinent to that notice.
Councilmember Peterson, are your comments related to the notice?
Does the notice include this summary or no?
I would say that the Agenda Item for the Notice of Intention would include some, could include some discussion of the actual development agreement. But it's not been finally negotiated yet, I have to tell you.
Okay. And so the reason I ask that, here's the point. I want to explain my vote tonight. So the bottom line is, I know there's still negotiations to take place, but already I see some red flags, because my main concern when we first started along this line of discussion of tax incentives was that I wanted to make sure everyone was treated the same. And this kind of confirms my fears to me, and again, there's time to negotiate, but that we're picking winners and losers with these agreements. We still do not have a universal policy for all developments, and we're clearly not contemplating the same deal for everyone. We're talking Rivellon was 50% for 20 years. This is 20% for five years. Anyway, it seems that there's a common thread of allowing developments the chance of recovering their costs of public infrastructure, but not under the same terms. So until we have a universal policy that treats all the developments the same, I'm going to oppose these efforts. I have no intent. So I'm going to be voting no, because I have no intent at this point seeing the direction these things are going. And in my mind, there should be no need for individual agreements. We simply change our policy on how public improvements paid for by developers can be cost-recovered. The beauty of that approach is that if this is an effective economic incentive, then applying it universally will make the most of it. This will be true, this would be true to the free-market principles, where the only advantages of one Gilbert business over another Gilbert business would be decided by how well they serve their customers. Also, Gilbert businesses would, in this case, all of them, would have an advantage over businesses in other places, because we can create a better environment for them to operate in. And that's the kind of advantage I can get behind. So in short, in closing, I am a huge advocate of economic development, but I'm very much opposed to unfair markets just as much as I'm opposed to forced redistribution of wealth. We don't have to accept either of these unfair practices, where people who earned their success are forced to support or are put at a disadvantage to those who didn't. Let's chart a new course where we don't pick winners or losers in either individual or business pursuits. This country was built on the idea that each person or business had the right to succeed or fail based on their own merits. That is the secret to our success, and it's an ideal worth striving for. With that, I just would encourage we would proceed with some Agenda Item to discuss a policy about how we can treat everyone the same, so...
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion? Councilmember Taylor?
Let's get this light on. A couple of thoughts. One is, I agree with Councilmember Peterson, Mayor. Free and fair markets is the best, it's the gold standard, in my opinion, for how we treat everyone. And certainly, you know, share the thoughts there. And as I've seen this come really fast, one of the things I've thought about is if we have an incentive deal that is at some level for Company A and another level for Company B, the staff has done a good job of trying to look forward to see what build-out revenues need to be. But have we factored in, now this potentially would be two particular deals where we would have some kind of an offset on sales tax. What would that look like longer term? I haven't seen that. It's come pretty fast for me to really get that data. So that's a part of it that makes me a little bit uncomfortable in addition to, you know, just treating everybody fairly in the market. I think we're starting to set a precedent that, you know, may forecast and project the wrong thing that we want here. So a couple of concerns on that side that I just put out there, Mayor, thank you.
Any other comments? To Susan, to confirm, we need a vote of five for this to proceed. Is that correct?
On the notice of intent, I was just looking at the statute, and it appears that a simple majority.
Okay.
On the notice of intent, but on the development...
Development agreement, that's when we need a vote of five. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt a notice of intent to enter into a retail development tax incentive agreement with American Furniture Warehouse Company.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, please vote. We proceed with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. Agenda Item 22 is a report on our boards and commissions. I will turn to my right. And Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Ray, Vice Mayor Cooper, do you have any reports? To my left? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, it was my pleasure last night to administer the oath to Chairman Laura Barnes and the new Human Relations Commission, and look forward to working with them. They have a lot of great ideas and enthusiasm, and look forward to sharing some of their findings, you know, throughout the year.
Thank you. Agenda Item 23, future meetings. Any items to bring forward? Okay, thank you. Agenda Item 24, report from Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Two things tonight. One, I wanted to announce that we got Gilbert Road back open, both lanes in both directions, a day ahead of our projected schedule. So as of 5:00 today, Gilbert Road is back open. So that was a great effort from the crews that worked on it the night that the break occurred, right up through, making sure we got that road back open as quickly as it could. could, especially for our Heritage District businesses.
Vice Mayor Cooper?
Just a quick question. I saw a photograph from the scene. It looks like there were some pedestrian improvements at the railroad tracks as well. You want to speak to that?
We did. We made some improvements to the sidewalk crossing at the railroad track. It was an older crossing and not in a good shape.
And the efforts made as part of our service organization will be discussed at our next council meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. Also, just want to thank the members of our digital staff. They did a tremendous job. They put that together basically in the last 30 days. We're very proud of them, and there's many more good things to come out of that group. That is just the first of things yet to come. Congratulations to them.
Agenda Item 25, report from council members. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I, as passionate as I am about stopping forced redistribution, I am so excited about voluntary giving. And we have a breakfast coming up, February 26th. Forest City is putting on a breakfast at the Southeast Regional Library, starting at 7:30 a.m., ending at 9 a.m. And we've invited all the leaders of the community, and really, anyone in the community that's interested in being a part of serving your fellow citizens, and maybe a few that are outside of Gilbert, that we have an opportunity to help. We're going to talk about those service opportunities and make plans for that, and it's going to be a great morning, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, I just wanted to echo the thanks to the digital team, as well as recognize you, Mayor. That was absolutely a fantastic state of the town, the best I've seen. I've been to a few in the other neighboring communities, and not to brag, but I think that it was a quality production and definitely got the word out that Gilbert really is the place to be. So we appreciate your leadership on that, and you did a great job today at the chamber as well.
Thank you. I noticed some of the fine actors and actresses to my right and left, too. Great job. Thank you.
You weren't acting.
You weren't acting. You were being councilmembers. Good. Thank you. Anything else on 25? On Agenda Item 26, report from the mayor, a few quick items. First, yesterday, had the privilege of joining Town Manager Baner at the epicenter at Agritopia. And I just briefly mentioned that, as you have seen some diagrams of what will be happening, this afternoon event was in that cool category. And I'm sure there are better adjectives to use, but Joe Johnston brought some of the most creative, innovative thinkers from the valet to Gilbert to look and talk about what that could become. And so the next little while, that is the assignment, is to creatively think of what can happen there, and then the next phase will be building. And I think you'll be very excited to see what will be happening. We also recognize, as was talked about, our arts, and there is a Visual Arts League show that is going, is on display until Saturday, February 16th. And the paper has given some details on that. I also believe on our website, we have some details. Encourage our citizens to attend and view the art from many of our artists from Gilbert. The show is in Mesa, but that's part of the collaboration and partnering that we do with our communities, and we appreciate Mesa, the site, and Mesa being a sponsor for that. This afternoon, I attended the East Valley Partnership Monthly Board Meeting, and two items of note, that for the council, in the council room, I have placed the agenda, there's some materials that John Arnold, who is part of the governor's staff and does the budgeting, John made a presentation. John is also a Gilbert resident, did a great job of summarizing, and also the healthcare aspects of that. We followed up with Tim Bricker, our CEO of our Chandler Regional Medical Center and our Mercy Gilbert Medical Center, spoke to the Medicaid aspects of the governor's budget and did a fine job. And so some of those materials are in the packet in the council chambers. And then I echo what was mentioned, the mayor's Character Race and Relay, which will be taking place on Saturday, March 23rd. And then also, as a council, there is some information you will be receiving, an East Valley event that will take place in Gilbert. It will be the first time this has ever occurred. It is the mayor's prayer breakfast on Tuesday morning, March 19th. Forest City has involvement, but it's all of the East Valley communities, and we look forward to that. And on that note, thank you again for your participation. It was another great day, another great week in Gilbert. We had a couple of groundbreakings that were mentioned last Friday at the Veterans Administration outpatient clinic. And then on Tuesday, Vice Mayor Cooper, do you want to make any comments on our Rockefeller North Gateway Project? I know you did on Tuesday in our study session, but anything else you'd like to add tonight?
No, we're just excited to see that project begin, and very grateful to have folks from all over the world here at the groundbreaking of that event. It's going to, that'll be a nice start to the rest of the project that they have planned there.
Thank you. Our February 7, 2013 Town Council Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.